My iPad to see if it's better.
I don't want to.
We turn on a filter where we all have funny hats on?
Yeah, there you go. How much time do we have here? Getting close. Maybe I'll wait for the next meeting. I'll have 10 minutes, right?
Yeah. And Mayor Hughesman, I just made you the co-host, so you should be able to see when people raise their hands now and you should have that functionality.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
We ready?
Looks like based on the roster, we're still missing our three outside members. I'm not sure if they were planning on attending or not, but I don't see the three outside entities present. So I'm not sure if we want to give them another minute or two, or however you'd like to do it, Mr. Mayor.
We can wait. All right, let's get started. A little introduction, this is our first attempt at hosting a virtual meeting with the Zoom platform. Please be sure to have your video camera on and be mindful that we are streaming this meeting on Channel 8 and on our city's website. The chat function has been disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and I and our IT director will be co-host. To prevent any disruption, all members and their other staff will be muted except for myself as the chair. If you wish to speak, please use the raise hand function and I will be able to call when you to speak and the clerk will unmute you. Any votes taken will require roll call votes. The clerk will call your name and unmute you for you to give your vote. No commentary will be allowed outside of an a or nay vote. Confirm with the IT director that there are not any human or known technical issues. We're good. All right. That's the case and we will call them the Urban Renewal Authority Special Meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the role?
All righty. Commissioner Alan Thomas?
Present.
Commissioner Grimes? Commissioner Grimes? Looks like you muted yourself.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Wadiola?
Present.
Commissioner Hurst?
Present.
Commissioner Madera?
Present.
Commissioner Noble?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Present.
And then we have Commissioners Fairfield, Commissioners Tedesco, Commissioners Lewis. Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to excuse those members not present? Commissioner Hurst?
Motion to approve the commissioners that are absent.
I have a motion to excuse those members that are not present. Commissioner Madera?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to excuse those members that are not present. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the Mile High Greyhound Park closing date sale extension, will Ms. Jenna Lowry please make the presentation?
Jenna, you're unmuted.
Perfect, thank you. And I'm sharing my screen for this, correct Dylan?
Let me see here.
I have it all queued up, ready to go.
Um.
Or I can talk without the presentation.
Give me just one moment. Justin, I'm not seeing where she is sharing her screen. Can you confirm if she is or not?
Yes, Jenna, can you hit the share screen button?
Yep. Absolutely. You should see the title slide. That's all I see.
We are not seeing that, Jenna.
Okay. How would you like to? Let's see, hold on, I'll try again. Okay, is that better?
Yes, I can see it now.
Okay. Perfect. And we will get started. So. Good evening, CCURA Board members. Thanks for tuning in this evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of city staff and Dell West to formally request an extension on two executed contracts for the Mile High Greyhound Park redevelopment project. The first contract, the purchase and sale agreement mandates that the URA and Dell West fully close on the sale of the property by April 1st, 2020, while our second contract, the master developer agreement requires that the full plat be finalized and recorded by April 2nd, 2020. Therefore, the purpose of my presentation tonight is to explain why these extensions are necessary for the success of the project. I will start out with a brief recap on progress that both parties have made over the last few months in order to meet the original deadlines. The three most notable actions include work on the master subdivision plat, which includes 12 tracts, the private park, right-of-way dedications, the regional stormwater detention pond, and the necessary public improvement agreement. Dell West, the second most notable effort is Dell West's attempts to meet their funding requirement for the affordable housing project, which they're on track to do so, and environmental testing that has been conducted by both parties. At this point, staff in Dell West, oh, excuse me, sorry. So I'm at this point, staff in Dell West are coming together to make this joint request for the extension to preserve the project. So we'll dive in a little bit further about the plat. So this redevelopment project is complex and so is the corresponding plat. At this point, staff in Dell West are optimistic that the current plat can be corrected to begin its final approval process in April. However, in order for the plat to be approved, the following two issues must first be resolved. First, some programmatic changes to the park drainage connection roads to open space must be made. And these adjustments that are required in the plat will also impact Dell West's infrastructure package and their public improvement agreement. Second, some corrections on the legal description need to recur. In addition, the approval process for the plat will include public notice, comment, and potentially city council action based on the nature of comments received. And as you all are aware, that public notice period does take some time. Looking at the environmental actions now, as of today, both the city and Dell West remain in active contact with the CD-PHE to mitigate the historic onsite contamination. Dell West is currently working to obtain a no further action letter by participating in the state's voluntary cleanup program. However, the current public health crisis has absolutely impacted their testing capacity and the CD-PHE's capacity to review their process and their attempts to obtain the no further action letter. So some other key actions to date include the completion and approval of the design standards, which have been used against all submittals that Dell West has made to date, progress on their infrastructure engineering. Dell West has in fact received tax credit approval for the 4% low-income housing project, and they will self-finance the single-family portion of that project. As you know, the Urban Renewal Authority has obtained necessary water resources required for closing. Both parties have prepared to escrow funds for closing. And lastly, our owner's representative, Rick Wells, continues to work diligently with the site's hotel prospects. So we've absolutely seen a lot of good work, both on staff side and Dell West's side over the last few months. Despite these actions and the best efforts of both of our parties, closing by April 1st does not seem to be feasible. Much like the impact on environmental testing, the COVID-19 crisis has greatly impacted the final processing of title work and the ability of the county recorder to record that plat. In addition, the required social distancing requirements mean that in-person working meetings that we were having on a bi-weekly, if not more frequent basis, to resolve remaining issues are no longer possible. And while we are able to have in-person meetings, it is more challenging to get through these last few weeks getting ready to close. As such, staff in Dell West have come together to recommend extending the closing deadline to June 1st. And I know that was a pretty brief presentation, so at this point, I'm happy to take any questions. Our staff is here as well. We have some Dell West consultants on the line. But our recommended action is to approve the amended purchase and sale agreement to extend the closing deadline to June 1st and then approve that master developer agreement to extend the plat deadline to May 20th. And at this point, I guess I'll leave my screen on in case there are questions. I can go back to other slides. Thank you for your time.
Any questions or discussion at this time? Seeing no questions or discussion, does anybody wish to make a motion? Commissioner Grimes? Commissioner Hurst? Go ahead, Commissioner Hurst.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the deadline agreement to July 1st and May 20th, 2020, respectively, as they were presented to us.
Are you sure you want to make that July 1st?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation, if you will.
Okay, so you want June 1st instead of July 1st?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion to approve the amendment to the PSA to extend the closing deadline to June 1st and amendment to the master developer agreement extending the plat deadline to May 20th, 2020. Commissioner Madera?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there anybody wishing to discuss this item before we vote on it?
There, I'm going to lower hands to allow people to raise them again if they have discussion. Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no request for discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimes?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadiola?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fairfield? Commissioner Tedesco? Commissioner Lewis? Vice Chair Frank?
Yes.
And Chair Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
All right. For the record, that motion passes nine to zero. That is the last business that we have for the Commerce City Urban Renewal Authority meeting. We will adjourn to the city council meeting in a different Zoom meeting. We'll start that council meeting in approximately 10 minutes to give everyone time to sign back in, get set up, and start the council broadcast. See you then. We are adjourned. to give everyone time to sign back in, get set up and start the council broadcast. See you then. We are adjourned.
Just so you know, Mayor Hughesman, Councilwoman Allen Thomas is rebooting her iPad right now, so she's going to try to rejoin shortly. So hopefully another minute or two, we'll have her back on.
Okay, we can wait till then.
Okay, Mayor Hughesman, Councilwoman Allen Thomas is back online and can hear and see us just fine now.
Okay. All right, we'll get started. Same introduction as last time. This is our first attempt at hosting a virtual meeting with the Zoom platform. This is a special meeting with a limited agenda. Please be sure to have your video camera on and be mindful that we are streaming this meeting live on Channel Eight and on our city's website. The chat function has been disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and I and our IT director will be the co-host. To prevent any disruption, all members and other staff will be muted except for myself as the mayor. If you wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. Now we'll be able to call on you to speak and the clerk will unmute you. Any votes taken will require roll call votes. The clerk will call your name and unmute you for you to give your vote. No commentary is allowed while voting. This time we'll call a special meeting to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Hughesman?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Present.
Councilmember Madera?
Present.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Present.
Councilmember Noble?
Present.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Present.
Councilmember Hurst?
Present.
Councilmember Grimes?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Looks like everybody is present and accounted for, so no need for a motion to excuse. There is also no general citizen communication. It's special meetings and telephone access is limited as we're testing the system. Members of the public can view the meeting live on Channel Eight or on the city's website. This time we'll ask Jenna Lowry to make a presentation on the Mile High Greyhound project closing date of sale extension.
Jenna, you are unmuted.
Share my screen again. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I'm just going to use the same presentation that I gave for our CCURA meeting. However, please note that city council only needs to take action on one agreement in this presentation. Good evening, city council members. I am here tonight on behalf of city staff and Del West to formally request approval on an extension for one of the executed contracts for the Mile High Greyhound Park redevelopment project. That contract is the master development agreement, which currently requires that the full plat for the Mile High Greyhound Park property be finalized and recorded by April second, twenty twenty. For those of you watching at home, please note that a closing deadline extension until June first, twenty twenty in the purchase and sale agreement was previously approved by the Urban Renewal Authority. So the purpose of my presentation tonight is to explain why both of those extensions are necessary and to request for the council to approve the extension to the master developer agreement. I will start off with a brief recap on on the progress that both parties have made over the last few months to meet the original closing deadlines. The three most notable actions include, first and foremost, work on the master subdivision plat. That plat includes all twelve tracks, the private park, right-of-way dedications, the regional stormwater detention pond and the public improvement agreement. Second, Del West's efforts to meet their funding requirements for the affordable housing project, and they have been successful in meeting those requirements. And lastly, the ongoing environmental testing conducted by both parties. So we'll focus in on the plat. So as you all know, this redevelopment project is complex and so is the corresponding plat. At this point, staff in Del West are optimistic that the current plat can be corrected to begin its final approval process in April. However, in order for that plat to be approved, the following two issues must be resolved. First, some programmatic changes to the park, drainage and connecting roads to the open space must first be made. These adjustments that are made in the plat also impact Del West's regional infrastructure package and their public improvement agreement. The second issue that needs to be resolved is making minor modifications to the legal description. In addition, this approval process will include public notice, public comment, and potentially city council action based on the nature of the public comments that we receive. Looking at the ongoing environmental work, as of today, both the city and Del West remain in active contact with the CDPHE. Del West is currently working to obtain a no further action letter by participating in the state's voluntary cleanup program. However, the current public health crisis has impacted Del West's testing capacity, third-party testing capacity, and the CDPHE's review process. Other key actions to date include the completion and approval of design standards, which have been used to review all of Del West's submissions, progress on their infrastructure engineering. Del West has in fact received tax credit approval for the four percent low income housing project and they will self-finance the single-family home portion of the project. The Urban Renewal Authority has obtained necessary water resources for closing. Both parties have prepared to escrow funds for closing. And lastly, the Urban Renewal Authority's owner representative continues to work with the site's hotel prospects. Despite all of this good work and the efforts made by both staff and Del West, it does not appear as if closing prior to April first or finishing the plat by April second are feasible. Much like impact on environmental testing, the COVID crisis has greatly impacted our final processing of title work. And also it has prevented staff and Del West from having our bi-weekly, oftentimes more frequently than that, meetings to sit down and work on challenges to get to close with the plat. As such, staff is recommending and formally requesting that an extension on the plat deadline be made until May twentieth. At this point, I will go ahead and open the floor up to council to ask any questions that you may have of myself, other staff, or Del West.
Does anybody have any questions? Any discussion? Anybody wish to make a motion?
Move to approve an amendment to the PSA to extend the closing deadline to June first.
I think all we are doing is the master developer agreement plat, correct?
Correct, just the master development agreement until May twentieth, if council agrees.
Okay, so move.
Councilman Hurst?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to extend the plat deadline to May twentieth, twenty twenty. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sheasley?
Thank you. Mayor Hughesman, just checking, I want to make sure, I believe the actual action that needs to be taken is that the purchase and sale agreement deadline to June first, not the master development agreement.
Oh, I apologize. I caused a lot of unnecessary confusion.
Can we get you two to remake your motion, please? Councilman Hurst, do you are? Will not unmute you. There you go. Councilman Hurst, you're unmuted. Hold on.
I would second the amendment to fit.
Let's let Councilman Madera start. Councilman Madera, do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, amendment to my original motion to extend the purchase and sell agreement to deadline to June first.
Thank you, Councilman Hurst. Councilman Hurst?
I second that amendment.
I have a motion and a second to amend the closing deadline to June first. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next up, we have administrative business. The first item of administrative business is the ratification of a special meeting action. On March nineteenth through twentieth, the city council held an emergency meeting via Google poll to authorize me to sign on to a letter of the U.S. Conference of Mayors advocating for coronavirus relief. All members unanimously consented to the meeting and authorized my signing. Ratification is required pursuant to our emergency meeting ordinance. Right now I'm looking for a motion and a second to ratify the actions of the council during an emergency special meeting on March nineteenth and twentieth. Mayor Pro Tim?
I motion to ratify the actions of the council during an emergency special meeting on March nineteenth, twentieth.
Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
My second motion.
Have a motion and a second to ratify the special meeting that was held via Google poll on March nineteenth and twentieth. Is there any discussion on this item? Councilman Hurst, do you have discussion?
No, sir. No, sir.
Seeing no discussion, we will take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Very good. That passed unanimously. Thank you for your support on that. That was good for us to sign on to that. Next up is council meeting schedules. We'll ask City Manager McRum to provide an update and recommendations regarding city meetings.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me? City council will recall that you previously canceled all regularly scheduled city council meetings through the end of this month. You also canceled any regularly scheduled board and commission meetings. Given the extended nature of the crisis, it would be my recommendation that you extend that public meeting cancellation through April seventeenth. Last week, I extended the public closure of city facilities through April seventeenth as well, so all city facilities continue to be closed to the public through at least April seventeenth. So it would be my recommendation that city council continue its cancellation of regularly scheduled city council meetings and any regularly scheduled board and commission meetings through the seventeenth. That does not mean special meetings could not occur. I am aware the Housing Authority may be required to take an action related to the Mile High Greyhound Park. They could still do so by scheduling a special meeting. So that would be my recommendation.
Any discussion on this item, Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, I think I agree. We need to be in concert with the metro area in the state. The one thing I would ask is obviously there's a lot going on right now. You guys are working on keeping everybody safe and I appreciate those efforts. One thing I'd like us to focus on is an exit plan. I don't think you go from where we're currently at today or where we foresee ourselves in the future to back to just hundred percent normal overnight. So if we can start planning towards the exit plan and how we're going to successfully transition back to what we would consider normal life in the past, that would also be good for us to plan ahead just to give our citizens some type of direction as to how this, how we're going to work our way back into our normal everyday lives. That would be much appreciated, but you guys have done a fantastic job so far. I appreciate that. Just trying to push us forward beyond April seventeenth.
Thank you, Councilman Hurst. Any other members wishing to discuss?
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes, sir.
Just as a point for the members of the city council boards and commission subcommittee, that would then extend our interview date, which we currently have scheduled for April fourth out in indefinite time. I would ask that until we're able to meet at a regular subcommittee meeting on our normal Monday night time, that I'll go ahead and email out those people that have applied and push that out indefinitely unless one of the members has a preference otherwise.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Can you hear me? Okay, I would just suggest that we move it to the next quarter, the interview. The interviews don't run because I would think we would be out of this at that time. So I would just suggest we move them to the next quarterly date so that we stay on that quarterly schedule. It is what it is.
Yep, I'm happy to do whatever the committee members would like.
Any other opinions from the committee members? Councilman Hurst?
Jose, you agree with that? I mean, I'm good with doing that or if we have a way to virtually do interviews, I guess we could, we can resort to that. My biggest thing is all of these committees are very important to our success for the rest of this year. And I want to make sure that we're filling the people who are wanting to give back to the community. So I'm willing to hear other options, but I'm also on board with just extending them out because that seems like the most natural resolution.
Councilman Wardiola?
Yeah, I think I'm fine with moving it to the next quarter. I think they're pretty flexible too. As long as we, Dylan communicates with them, I'm all right with moving it to the next quarter.
All right. Councilwoman Smith?
I'm okay with moving it to the next quarter. In the world we're in, it just kind of makes sense to move it back because everything else is being moved.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
So still looking for a motion and a second regarding what we do with our council meetings and board and commission meetings through April 17th? Councilmember Madera?
I'd like to make a motion to cancel all council meetings and board and commissions meetings through April 17th, unless a special meeting is called.
I have a motion to cancel all council meetings and board and commission meetings through April 17th unless a special meeting is called. Councilwoman Noble?
I'd like to second that.
I have a motion and a second for that. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hurst?
No, sir. I was looking to second that. I'm good. No discussion.
Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Hi.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank? I didn't catch your vote, Mayor Pro Tem Frank.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Very good. That passed unanimously. We will suspend all council meetings and board and commission meetings through April 17th unless a special meeting is called. That is all we have on our agenda for this evening. Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, I would like to ask if we could discuss for a moment the idea of having a resident and business relief package that we could potentially look at. We know the staff is really busy and they've done such a tremendous job. Thank you so much, Brian. It's really been great. But I am reading so much and hearing from so many residents who are concerned about things. For example, their taxes that are due. I believe that the county is going to be considering delaying the taxes, county, the property taxes, for example, but perhaps we might be able to urge them to do that. There is a question about memberships at the Parks and Rec Center also. And I don't know how to do it, but I would like to just put this forward.
Mr. McRum?
Thank you, Councilwoman Noble. It's a question I've had from several of you, wondering what's the city's role in minimizing the economic impact to individuals and businesses. So I think there likely is a role for the city. Because state and federal aid is still evolving, my recommendation would be allow us to continue some work that we've started already to understand how state and federal aid would come to bear on individuals and businesses in our community. And then with that information, we can start to identify what gaps might there be that we would lay out for city council that city council could then act on. At this point, it might be premature for us to take action, especially knowing that there's federal aid coming that hasn't been approved by Congress yet.
Councilwoman Noble?
Property taxes are due on April 10th. So that's a question, and when there might be other business taxes due as well. And then the second one is, what are we doing regarding our court and potential evictions? Are we following the federal model on delaying any eviction cases for six months? Or what's the situation there? Thanks.
Mr. Sheasley?
Thank you. The city's municipal court does not handle evictions. It only handles municipal offenses and traffic tickets coming through our court. We also don't handle any domestic violence issues. So those wouldn't be within our court.
Councilwoman Noble?
And that remains is about the property taxes, and if we would wish to vote to urge the county to extend the due date for property taxes.
So are you asking permission to have this conversation so that a motion can be made? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So my understanding, because this is a special meeting and that was not on the agenda, that the entirety of the council will have to agree to take up that discussion? So, Mr. City Clerk, will you please hold the members?
Sure. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Carries nine to zero.
All right, Councilwoman Noble, the floor is yours. You can bring this up to the council.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Because the property taxes are due on April 10th, and there's a lot of concern, we're not getting back to our regular meetings until April 17th at the earliest. I also understand that the county will be taking a look at extending the deadline since these are county property taxes. Of course, we have fire, we have metro districts, we have school districts, we have our own bonds that are associated with this. So there is a ripple effect. There is no question. All of this is extraordinary, and there are ripple effects on all of it. But I would like to make a motion that we urge the county to delay the property tax deadline until July 15th.
Okay, before we go there, my understanding on property taxes is you have two options. Option number one is you pay it in two split payments. The first payment being due sometime in February, the second payment being due in June, or you pay it in one lump sum in the period of April. So what are you trying to encourage them to delay?
I'm trying to encourage them to do the same thing that the state is doing on state taxes and federal taxes. And in this case, these are the property taxes and to delay it until the same date, which is July 15th. So it would be both the April 10th taxes that are due and the June taxes that are due, the second half taxes that are due would be delayed until June 15th. I don't know what the motion is that's going to happen before the county, but I would like to be able to say that Commerce City is encouraging the county to delay the property taxes until July 15th and allow our residents and businesses to get their feet underneath them. Hopefully by then.
Thank you for that clarification. Deputy City Manager Tinklinburg?
Yes, sir. I have the residential property tax bill in front of me. Just for clarification, the full payment is due April 30. If you want to split your payments, the first half is due March 2, the second half is due June 17.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, I wasn't really going to speak on this, but my feeling is that we're trying to stick with what the state and feds are doing just to create one singular, less confusing action.
Councilman Madera?
Yeah, I would agree. I'd second this, and I would just propose that we write a letter to the county.
So I have a motion and a second for us to encourage Adams County to adopt a property tax holiday until July 15th, which would be consistent with both the state and federal filing dates for income tax. Is there any discussion on that item? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Carries nine to zero.
Very good. Staff can draft that letter and we'll figure out signatures after it's drafted. Yes, Mr. McRum? All right, all right. That is the end of our agenda. Seeing no other items for discussion, we are adjourned. Okay, we are not adjourned. I already called it. We are adjourned.